Call this meeting, budget meeting to order, May 7th, 2014. And we will start with public works.
Yes, this year's budget is at a reduction of a total of $27,942. We'll start with wages, 573, 484. This is for 11 and a half full-time employees and two part-time employees. I budgeted one position six months with the elimination of the position after that first six months. Next item is 1001, 0115 clothing, $7,100. This is to provide for 12 full-time employees. That shouldn't be 11, but the last three years, I haven't bought clothes for one employee. So actually, I've been consistent with this item. The cost of boots has skyrocketed, but I've maintained the same amount.
Chip, I wrote some things down here. We buy the clothes for them?
Yes, we don't. We buy a pair of leather boots and a pair of pack boots, a jacket, five shirts and five pants.
We do this every year?
Every year, yeah. Next item is vehicle expense, $4,004. Basically, just pays for my expenses, my travel within the town and out of town. And that's remained the same for the last four years. Next item is office supplies, $600. Paper tablets, pens, staples, whatever. Next item is postage, 150. Pays for sending packages to DEP and the state and whoever. Next item is tree removal, $2,500. Generally, we get half a dozen trees in the year that people want taken down, they're dead, and we require is a bucket truck. And that will cost anywhere from 120, 150 dollars an hour. So we're pretty limited. We could use a lot more money than that, but we've maintained and managed that amount for the last four or five years.
So this is a high adult service?
Yes, I mean around wires and things. We use pad our debt. Next item is supply materials, $2,800. This provides shovels, rakes, cones, gloves, flashlight, batteries, trash bags, cones, barrels, anything we need during the year. Next item is gas, oil and lube. This pays for all the gas for, and the diesel for the public works and the cemeteries. And that is $73,000.
That cemetery too?
Yeah, we provide the gas for the cemetery. Next item is salt, $69,000. We budget 1,200 tons a year to provide salt and snow, for snow and ice removal for all operations, public works. Last year's price, well, the last two years' price was 57.50, but it's my plan, I've been going with the state bid, but Bangor-Brewer bid together after the state bid comes out, and they paid $51 last two years. So I'm gonna go with them and see what happens. Hopefully, we're gonna drop it a little bit there, so we're trying.
I think you get into the state on that as their transportation is what hurts you, because they're gonna land it in Milon Market for the same price they're gonna land it to you. And when Bangor-Brewer comes together, it's a hell of a lot shorter distance to come up. And so you probably will gain on that.
Brewer was gonna try and negotiate with their current suppliers, International Salt.
Yep.
They wanna see if they would do the same money for next year and include us, so that would be a good savings for us.
Did you use 1,200 tons this year?
Yes.
Did you over, you over 1,200?
No.
You didn't?
What it did, I reduced the amount of sand I put up for next year by about 500 yards.
Okay.
Next item is culverts, $3,000. Culvert prices range anywhere from 10 to 30 dollars a foot, depending on the size. Next item is tire patching. We don't do very much tire patching. Patch costs, $100 a ton, so 30 tons for the year, that's pretty minimal. That's a tribute to the paving program in the past. Next item is street signs, $3,000. We probably lose $2,000 in signs by people taking them and then replacing the faded stop signs and whatnot. Next item is calcium chloride, 2,500. It basically, we buy a couple pallets of Pella Doe for the walkways and library, pool, transfer station, municipal building. And we use probably a pallet of calcium chloride on the gravel roads and snow and ice control. Next item is plow steel, 2205. This is to provide cutting edges and tire chains for all public works vehicles.
I had a question on that. Why is that kept separate and not like put in maintenance? It's any question, I just don't know. I was just curious as to why.
It was set up like this before I came, but I think it's to track the plow steel.
Okay.
Just to give you an idea, to do all the trucks one time is $9,396. So we basically budget for two sets, and then we buy tire chains at 150, 200. I mean, we'll buy crosslinks for 5, 550 a crosslink.
I didn't doubt that, I just was wondering what your theory was behind putting it in a separate category, just whether you needed...
I'll refer to the manager on that, she might know.
It was set up the way, that way when I assumed this budget process. However, repair and maintenance covers a wide variety of, this, cutting edges on plows is something that we're going to do to a certain number of vehicles, like most of them, every single year. So that's tracked separately as an ongoing cost. Unlike repairs and maintenance, if we don't actually lose a transmission or some other biggie, then our repair and maintenance budget will fluctuate. This one stays pretty much the same.
Okay.
Next item is resurfacing roads. I originally had 67,000, but the manager put 75,000 back. So if you remember at the infrastructure committee meeting, the explanation sheet, when you add in striping and you take the list of roads I wanted to pave, which was 344,595, you add line striping, 9,800, gives you a subtotal of 354,395, the last 75,000. So I'm looking for 279,395. I'll refer to the manager on this.
And there's another 100,000 in reserve budget for this. So the current, and there's 84,000 that comes in from local roads assistance money. So if you add 84 and 75 and 100, you come up with...
250.
250, odd thousand dollars.
95,000 or something.
It's 95,000 dollars and change. It's 72 percent of what was requested, the amount that is involved in those numbers. But as I said, when I present the overall PowerPoint on the 19th, there were three areas. One was police reserve, one was fire. Police reserve officers, the second was fire, call personnel. And the third is an adjustment to paving to bring up those others. It is our two areas that we're going to make drastic adjustments if we want to stay current with, or get somewhat current, we should make an adjustment on. But as it's presently budgeted...
Between the operating and the reserve budget and the local road assistance monies, it's, we have budgeted 72 percent of the request. So that's...
That being said, that number needed now is 95,395.
Did you want...
Yeah, for those who weren't here way back when, the reason we ended up splitting the road surfacing into pieces and putting part of it into reserves was because what we were trying to do is to level out, flatten out the mill rate, so it didn't bounce up and down depending on what streets were being paved. And so we would put a constant amount of money into the mill, into the reserve, and then a reasonably constant amount of money into the operating budget, and then use the reserve funds to keep that level from one year to the next as road mileage would go up and down depending on the streets we were doing. And it kept us from having a bouncing mill rate. Since paving has gotten so expensive, we're not able to do that, use that effectively very much anymore in terms of smoothing things out. Hopefully, at some point in time, we'll get back to where it'll provide its function again.
Next item is equipment replace. You've already approved a new snowboard at 21,676 out of reserves. Next item is equipment maintenance, $60,000. I gave you a list of equipment that we have. This line item is to maintain all the equipment that we have in inventory.
Is this maintenance all done out?
No, no. This is like, for example, a truck tie is $500. Some of it's taken out. In fact, I have one truck that I can't afford to fix right now. I have $6,000 left in this line item, and it lost an internal injector pump. So installed, it's $3,800. So I'll wait two, three weeks, and then when I feel more comfortable, I'll see if I get enough money to fix it, but...
I guess overall, you do...
We knew our oil changes.
You do stuff yourself.
Brakes, yeah, we have a mechanic slash truck driver.
Okay, okay. How do we, do we have any idea what breakdown is on that?
As far as what?
As far as what, how much it has to go outside? In other words, if you have to take a piece of equipment to Whitehead Ford or Freightliner or someone to get something done, or...
Probably...
And I'm assuming this brings in snowplow equipment and all that stuff and everything too to...
Basically, there's anything with electronics. And then in today's world, all these trucks are electronics. If we can't, they need a laptop to figure out what.
Right.
But, you know, the lights, hydraulic hoses, brakes, tires, we do it all, maintenance. I would say we send out, would you agree Dudley, probably around 30 percent?
30, 30 to 40, somewhere in there would be sent out.
Next item is safety equipment, $1,600. Earplugs, safety goggles, safety vest. Last year, we bought new rain jackets. Next item is equipment rental. This provides street sweeping. And four years ago, we bought a new John Deere tractor, 5105, we leased purchase. Every year, we've paid out $11,449.51. This will be the last year on that.
Okay.
And we'll own it.
So it's really not equipment rental?
Well, it's how I paid for it.
Okay.
Next item is street construction. We got a project on Elm, Elm Street West this summer, underground drainage. I wanna fix the guardrail on Cobook Road, $7,000. And I just picked up another underground drainage project this morning on Emerson Mill Road South. And there's a possibility we may have to replace a four-foot pipe on Oak County Road. So it goes. Next item is travel and training, 1,200. We try to send the guys to training at least two or three times a year, main local roads. And that does it for the public works and...
Drug testing's done how often? Random drug testing?
Yeah, we, we are sent a list once a month. And every driver's in a pool. We may go two, three months where there's no, nobody picked. And last month, we had one picked, so...
Okay, yep.
We're gonna go to the municipal garage. Heating, heating fuel for the garage at 14,000. This is based on 7,000 gallons of propane.
I got one question on the electricity. Is that gonna go up when you go to the zero turn, because you're gonna have to have more power to run that compactor, right?
I think that electricity is taken out of the solid waste budget.
So it's figured into the solid waste?
Yes.
You've already figured that in there?
And it will, will go up.
Right, well, I didn't know which one of these departments that was coming out.
Right. My propane supplier went up like five cents a share, so we're gonna bid that out. Hopefully, the $2 a gallon will be lower.
Have you looked at any, using $14,000 of propane, have you looked at any alternative source on that, of putting anything in, i.e. pellet?
Not at this time. I haven't gotten the capital to do it.
Well, I know that's a hard thing to throw out, but there's grants available and stuff like that, and return on investment on some of these things. Pellet's half the price of fuel oil, so it doesn't take too long, and that's not a huge area of heating compared to like the behemoth across the street over here.
And the heat exchange systems too have rebates. Yeah, the heat exchange systems, they have rebates in there. They have a pretty quick payback too.
Yeah, the only, it's a good idea to keep looking into alternate things, but if I remember rightly, the heating system you have has central burners and distributed in two ways, down the, down the interior part of the burner, of the boilers, so that you have the bays. So each bay has its own heating tube, and so it's a whole new heating system if you try to change fuel.
We, seven years ago, we put in infrared propane heaters, one in each bay heats it. What I wanna do though is, we need to put in programmable thermostats to control the heat, and I think we can save there too, so we're constantly looking to try to save. Your pellet, your pellet stove suggestion is a good one, but I question the room, because when all the trucks are parked in there in the winter, you put your hand in sideways, it's tight. So I don't know where you would position it or...
I, that was just a question.
Right.
I don't know, I haven't been out there, I haven't seen it, I don't know, but I just know that we have to start looking at alternative things to do, and pellets end up being half the price of everything else, usually.
Right.
Oh, this is a hell of a good price on propane. But I was just wondering, you can put pellet stoves outside.
Right.
If there are a problem inside. But I was just curious if you've done any investigating into that to see what might happen? If you can get a short return on investment on that type of thing, the council, I would assume, would look at saying, if you're gonna pay it back in two years or three years, it certainly would be something to take a strong look at to do.
Right.
That was my, that was my only thought on it.
Okay. Next item is garage maintenance repairs, $11,000. I've been trying to upgrade the lighting of the garage, because most of the bulbs we have are, they're not gonna make them after this year. So we've changed around a couple of bays, and we'll take a couple more bays. And so it's 4,500 just for miscellaneous repairs, 3,500 for garage lighting, and 3,000 for floor drain tanks pumping. That is the municipal garage budget.
So I guess now we're on the solid waste page. Does, do these numbers reflect going to the single sort, or whatever it's called, recycling?
What, what I would like to do, basically what I did is I removed, I had a item brush...
I think it's on solid waste.
...that I reduced from 27,000 to 50.
Okay.
I reduced the whole budget by 12,000. But I do, I do have a concern, since I reduced it, because we're going to zero sort, and I have no road track of what it's gonna cost us. So it's a gamble, but we'll make it work. I'm hoping that people will recycle more and our cost per will go down, and that's where we're gonna see the savings. I did, in this budget, I did eliminate the part-time position, just gonna leave it with the two full-timers. Because once we go to zero sort, they won't need to have a guy in there sorting things around, but we will wanna have a guy checking and assisting people in the, in the zero sort and the solid waste. First line item is wages, 64,345. I reduced that from 68, 764 last year. Next item is clothing, 1,100. This provides boots and clothes for the two full-time employees. Next item is supply materials, $1,000. This provides shovels and rakes and brooms and materials at the transfer station. Next item is electricity, 2,200. And to answer your question, Councilor Ritter, I, I can't guess how much more that's gonna go up.
Those are all three things.
Yeah. Next item is equipment maintenance. We generally try to change the oil in the packages once a year, and we have a gentleman come and power wash underneath it and clean them up. Thanks for that. Next item is equipment rental, 1,500. This is in there for if one of the packages crashed, and we need to hire a truck to haul the trash, to park and whatnot. Next item is solid waste disposal. I reduced that to 260,444 from 272, 470 last year. Household trash, 127, 300. Wood waste, 15,000. Demolition debris, 43,125. Asphalt shingles, 37.50. Jettison board, 18.75. Trucking services, 62, 600. District fees, 3,500. DEP license, 22, 220, 100, 220 dollars. Resident permits, 700. Household hazardous waste, 2,500. Universal waste collection, 500. For a total of 260,444.
Can I ask you, Chip, you're, you're talking a couple times about electricity of the solid waste. Is that metered separately?
I believe so.
Well, how... Yes, we receive a separate bill for the transfer station portion of the facility.
So it has its own separate demand meter or something?
Yes, yes. We receive a separate bill for it.
Now, that includes the recycle building and, or just the compactors?
I believe that it is the electricity for the little building and the compactor.
And the lights on, on the...
That's correct, around there. But I'm not sure if the, I presume you're talking about the swap shop, that little building, that I don't believe is, I think that's part of the garage, but that's minimal compared to the draw and the creation of the electricity is the packers, you know?
And just to back up just, just a bit, talking about your part-time help, you're eliminated. Was that only on weekends, per se, or what?
That, that was only budgeted for the demolition weekends.
Okay, for C and D weekend. And that part-time individual was the one that was usually probably in the shack?
In the shack, pushing the button.
Pushing the button. So you just, let's say C and D weekend, you got a Friday, Saturday and Sunday night, you're gonna, there's two individuals, Gary and Brian.
Right.
Still there, and one will be in the shack.
Right.
And one will be out.
Mm-hmm.
Doing the whole yard.
We're gonna position the new zero sort packer right beside the tower, so he'll be able to watch it and push the button. So he'll be in charge of the solid waste packer and that, and the other employee will be out directing the folks on demolition.
And they don't need to spend all that time that they've been spending making sure that the cardboard's flat and stacked properly and...
Where will that one individual spend most of his time then? Over on the C and D area?
Yes, and checking stickers.
Checking stickers, making sure there's no leaves in with the brush?
Correct.
Making sure the people that bring in refrigerators, air conditioners, have stickers on them.
Yes.
You're still gonna be a busy person.
Yeah.
Okay.
But we, you know, we saw our chance to reduce, and we did.
Sure.
Chip, on that equipment maintenance, was that when you said changing the oil on the packages and power washing?
Yes.
We have a power washer though, right?
We have a gentleman that comes in. We, ours, we can't get over there. It does, it's not mobile.
Were you, you had mentioned, of course, you talk very, very low, and I have a hard time hearing at times, but you're talking about electricity redoing something in the garage?
No, putting in new lights, Bill.
Putting in new...
You know those LED lights?
Okay, in the garage?
Yes.
Okay.
We've done three bays, and we have three more to do.
LEDs, not T8s or electronic?
Well, the new type lighting, I'm not up on it.
Well, if you said LED, then that's what you heard, right? Okay, whatever. Okay, you are getting rid of the old T12s and...
Yes, exactly.
Did, did, is that through main efficiency? Are we getting a rebate? Do you know?
Not as of yet, but I'm gonna try.
Because main efficiency is giving 30-something percent rebate on going to T8s and LEDs. I think we should be receiving that. I know commercials units do, so I don't see why the town should...
Okay.
...receive a rebate, so you might wanna check on that.
We all set on that? Next budget is buildings and grounds. First item is wages, 660, 66,660. That's reduced from 77,040. That's reduced from seventy-seven thousand, forty dollars. Next item is flowers, five hundred dollars. And the manager wrote in a thousand for Hampden Garden Club for decorating intersections, town office entrance, and Dorothy Dix.
Yes, I did. There was a discussion about the inclusion of the garden club in outside agencies because what they actually do is perform a function for the town, which is the beautification of all its intersections, plus Dorothy Dix and several others. And that it would be reasonable to include what had been a donation as a, as a payment in buildings and grounds because that's the function that they perform. And I included it that way. The council's free to include it or exclude it, but it seemed like a rational location for, they do a huge amount of work. And to compensate at least for the cost of their materials, it certainly doesn't touch their time.
So, that line item will go from five hundred to fifteen hundred. Next item is supply materials, one thousand dollars. Provides the grounds and maintenance, rakes and shovels and weed whacker line and et cetera, gloves. Next item is maps and markers, five hundred dollars. Updates any maps in the cemeteries and any markers that are required in the, in the Next item is Memorial Day, three-hundred-and-thirty dollars. Provides flowers for the cemeteries on Memorial Day. Next item is water, three-hundred-and-thirty dollars. Provides water to Locust Grove Cemetery.
Chip, does, where does the water for Dorothy Dix Park come in? Up there, water service up there?
The recreation department has paid the water bill for Dorothy Dix Park.
Okay, well, we're building some broad ground, so I thought.
Yeah, no, that, that's where that is. At some point, we'll have to have a discussion about the whole parks aspect that's under recreation, but right now, that's where that expense sits.
Go ahead.
Next item is equipment maintenance. Provides maintenance on the mowers and tractors and trimmers, fifteen hundred dollars. Next item is grounds improvements, fence, grounds around the cemeteries, five hundred Next item is building repair, a thousand dollars. Looks like we may need to replace the door at the crib at Lakeview. That'll be around five, six hundred dollars. And then any maintenance to the little building down Locust Grove. Next item is safety equipment, six hundred dollars. Provides safety gear for the grounds and maintenance.
What would you be talking about in safety equipment?
What was I talking about, safety equipment?
Yeah, as compared to. Okay, I guess I, I guess I was talking about, I guess I, supplies and materials. Was there, was there gloves and et cetera things put in there on that? Did I hear that or?
Safety is like earplugs, goggles, vest. Supply materials is shovels, rakes, gloves. That total budget is eighty-one thousand, nine-twenty-six.
Can I ask, Memorial Day, what is that for?
Flowers. There's flowers that people have prepaid to have put on graves. Maybe I ought to refer this to the manager.
Yeah.
The flowers is under, the flowers item addresses the flowers that are part of the bequest, that we use some money from cemetery trust to offset this as a revenue. And the Memorial Day is a hundred-and-seventy-five dollars of that goes to the VFW for, to contribute to the cost of the parade and the things that they do. And the town has made that, given that to them for, before my time, many years.
Made a commitment, yeah.
And then the balance of that is what's necessary for the town's, what they put out on Memorial Day. But the flowers line item is the one that contains the bequest parts.
But some of that?
But some of that comes back as a revenue. We take money out of cemetery reserve to offset this cost.
Okay, yep.
Thank you.
The next account, budget account for tonight is non-department utilities. For a little history, once upon a time, these items were all included as parts of other fairly large budgets. Streetlights were in the police budget and the hydrant rental was in the fire department budget. And five or six years ago, the council determined that that unfairly inflated the costs of those budget by things that really were utilities that served the community in some fashion. So, that's why you have a separate budget for just these. Streetlight electricity is the cost of streetlight provision throughout Hampden. And the, our average cost per month for streetlights is just shy of four thousand dollars. There is, which comes to forty-seven, nine ninety-seven, the budget for this coming year is put in at nine to absorb any possible rate increase in standard offer or something that should occur over the next year. We have, in the past, gone with alternate electric suppliers if the rates were better, but electric rates right now are not coming down. They're, so there's a little extra budgeted there for that. Streetlight repair, the town has two lights. One is located at the intersection of Route 1A and Western Avenue. And the second one is at, in the intersection of Kennebec Road and 1A. And if anything happens to those lights, the town is responsible for the cost of repair. We contracted with the city of Bangor to do those repairs for us, but when possible, if somebody takes down a light, we have a large truck or something happened, we try to recover the cost of that from their insurance company if we can determine who did it and our light wasn't lower than it was supposed to be or anything. But that's the, what it covers. This light out here is not ours. This light out here at the intersection of 202 and Western Avenue is DOT's light. And so, we are, we do not pay for the cost of that light.
What about sixty-nine in Kennebec?
Sixty-nine in Kennebec is a state, we put in as a, we paid for the installation of the thing, but it's a state traffic regulation. We, we fronted the cost because we were, if you remember, we were so far down on the list of priority for that very dangerous intersection that the council voted to move forward with the repair, with the location on its own. Hydrant rental is really not that we, you rent a hydrant for X amount of dollars. Hydrant rental is, the largest part of that is what amounts to thirty percent of the water district's total budget. Under the rules of the PUC, the water district is allowed to charge the host municipality up to thirty percent of its total budget in what's called hydrant rental. And it, it's referred to as that because the water systems that are designed are designed larger than they need to be so that they have the capacity for firefighting in parts of the community that are served by the water system. So, if you have a fire on one street, you're not without water in other areas. The system is constructed with redundancies. In order to compensate the district for that, those kind of constructions, the, they're allowed thirty percent. For the town of Hampden, this year, that comes up out to about four-hundred-and-nine-thousand dollars. There is no, there is no rate increase anticipated for this year. We were told this some, some months ago. And this is the third year that we've not seen a rate increase from the district, which is very helpful because when their rates go up, we pick up thirty percent of whatever that increase was. So, that is hydrant rental and it is a bill that we receive based on the total budget for the water district on an annual basis. And then crosswalks and sidewalks, the, this amount of money is the amount that we pay annually to stripe our crosswalks and those kind of things. So, that is the, the cost of that. The line striping that's in Chip's budget is the center line. Striping, which some people think is a good idea and some people don't, but that's the cost of restoring our crosswalks on an annual basis. Winters are hard on them. By spring, things don't show up very well. And so, the total cost of that budget, again, is four sixty-eight, four-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand, four-hundred dollars.
Susan, the hydrant rental?
Uh-huh.
How, does that bill come once?
No, it comes quarterly.
Quarterly, okay.
We get to write a hundred-thousand-dollar check once a quarter. Yeah, it's certainly easier to manage your cash flow.
Yes, Councilor?
No, well, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that we do anything right away, but there are many parts, many places around the country have gone to non-potable fire control systems because of the tendency across the entire country to charge major proportions of water service costs to towns for water protection. And at different points in time, especially if we were ever looking at a major improvement or expansion of our water services and systems, it might be worthwhile to, to look into providing an alternate, non-potable water service for fire control. And then we wouldn't be looking at that four-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand dollars on new construction.
You've got the sewers right there. How convenient.
What?
I was kidding.
Well, well, there are actual places that do filter sewer water and pump it back in. But I mean, it's a function of, you know, especially where we have a Penobscot River and Maine is very fortunate to have a rather abundant supply of water to take treated, potable water that we spend a lot of money treating to get nice and clean so everybody can drink it and spray it on fires. At this point in time, doesn't make sense. Back in, you know, when the system was built, it probably made complete sense, but at this point in time, it's making less sense every year.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, municipal building, that's yours, right?
Is that on screen?
Well, it is.
I don't have that.
Yeah, I have it.
The town used to have a cleaning person that was part-time and did cleaning here and at the library and at the Public Works Garage. And we budgeted wage line items. And we changed last year that and went to a cleaning service. And so, the wages line item has been zeroed out. We aren't paying wages or FICA or workers' comp on a person for this. We are paying a contract with a cleaning service. And that's down under the building maintenance line item when we get to that one. The, what is shown is office supplies is the cost of cleaning supplies for the municipal building as well as paper products. We have a cleaning service that does part of it, but part of the building is cleaned by public safety personnel and we provide supplies for that endeavor. We're, the next item is telephone. We are required to have a phone in the elevator in this building and it has to have its own line. And the cost of that is a minimal cost, but it, that telephone line item is to cover the cost of the elevator telephone. Our electric bill is, we're a medium user account for this municipal building. The, there's an increase here to accommodate the fact that our bills are up over the prior year. And my concern is that any rate increase would leave that badly overdrawn if we didn't up that slightly. The next line item is fuel. We budget seven thousand gallons. We budgeted it at three sixty. We also use, which I am in hope certainly that the bids which we'll see in June, hopefully before this budget is done, we can make an adjustment. Our propane, five hundred gallons, which is for the generator that we have here, the, even at the current usage, we're still down more than three thousand gallons over a year over what we were before we changed out the boilers, which we did with a grant from Efficiency Maine. The water for this building, average, our average quarterly bill is nine seventy-three ninety-six, which is why there's, the budget for that is thirty-nine-hundred dollars a year. Under equipment service contractors, contracts, we have an annual inspection fee to the elevator. We have main fire protections, annual inspection fee to do that. Stanley elevator maintenance cost of a hundred-and-sixty-nine, twenty-two a month. And our mechanical services contract for preventative maintenance on the boiler and the air handler and those kind of things is two-thousand-six-hundred-and-eighteen dollars. The building maintenance line item, we have a pest control program, which is seventy-five dollars a month. Our cleaning service is four-hundred-and-forty dollars a month. Repairs to this, to the heating, lighting, air handling facilities, we, I've estimated that at five hundred dollars a month, which although that sounds high, this is a large building and when they come to do anything to the boiler or to the air handling system, it, every bill has four places on the left side of the decimal point. We have to do backflow and. We have to do backflow inspections for the water district on our, our backflow preventers, and those inspections are a hundred and fifty dollars a year. We replace the flags at this building. The approximate cost of that is three hundred dollars. We have to license our boilers to the state of Maine, that's two hundred and forty dollars. And then for stripping and waxing the floor for the front half of the building, that's six, sixteen hundred dollars for our program in order to keep the floors in reasonable shape, which brings the budget up this year, and the budget is up because, as I said, there's a higher fuel amount budgeted and electricity. The fuel may go down depending on the bid that we get in, in the month of June. And, but all of those contract and those service things, some, many of them, I, like the elevator related things, have the elevator, we have to have, those are the requirements.
Any questions?
Yeah, I would ask the same question as I asked for the municipal garage. Have we looked at, or will we look at alternate fuel sources since we're using seven thousand gallons of oil?
Yes, we, we can look at, at, I think it was five years ago, time starts to run together, but, or six, when we went from the boilers that were very ineffective to getting, and got a grant to replace them, that was sort of step one to reducing, and we reduced our costs dramatically. If the council wants to look at another alternative, the, the wood boiler, wood pellet boiler type thing, there are some entities that have those, that would have to be an attachment to this facility because it wouldn't, wouldn't, couldn't be in the building. I don't, I barely have room for the boilers in the boiler room, but certainly, as we move forward, we can look at as, at that as an alternative energy. The, one more likely for this building, I had, I, my hope is, is that the activation of gas comes through because of the pipeline and the septown system that they were talking, that the municipal building would have the opportunity to participate in that if they were. It's my understanding they're still looking at that, but that that would be another possible, very viable alternative for a change.
So the boiler system's five or six years old?
I believe.
And it's costing us almost eighty-six hundred dollars a year to keep them going?
No, not just the boiler, the, the.
Well, the air handler and lights, but I mean.
And handle lights. Plumbing facilities, air handling, lights, any of the systems that make this building go, yes, that's, half of the building was built in nineteen eighty-nine and half of it was built in two thousand and one, and the system, when this building was constructed, no, there was no air conditioning put in this building, and so several years after it was constructed, it was retrofitted with a system, an air handling system to allow for that. When the new section of the building was constructed, it was, that was coordinated. That end of the building has less in the way of issues related to it, but the control of the air, air handling system for air return and all those things is, it's an ongoing struggle, that it's almost impossible to solve because of the way in which the building was constructed, and it was put in as an afterthought.
I, I see if you look back at the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen budget for building maintenance, we budgeted six thousand but had to spend nearly twelve thousand, and the same thing happened again this past year, that we budgeted six thousand and have spent so far nearly eighteen thousand. So what's really happening is the amount we're budgeting is becoming more realistic, more in line with what actually is probably gonna get spent in the coming fiscal year.
Yes, and over those last two years, we've, we have also moved the, the cleaning cost from the top line to the bottom line, so that has made a difference too.
Any other questions? Motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second? Meeting adjourned.